Good evening. Welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 4th, 2016. If you please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clint?
Here.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Demmer?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda. Motion by Manning, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We have no proclamations or presentations this evening, so we are up to approval of the minutes from the September 20th meeting.
So moved now, acceptance of the minutes.
Motion by Clint, second by Geisler. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those are approved. And we have, looks like about eight items on our consent agenda this evening. First item is to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Mr. Ronan for Now Massages LLC located at 12685 Riverdale Boulevard pending a successful background investigation. Item two is to adopt Resolution Number 16-101, certifying delinquent utilities to taxes. The next item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 16-104 to accept a grant from the United States Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, JAG, to be used for the purchase of public safety equipment and authorizing the police chief as fiscal agent and grant administrator. And this was, this was actually something that we looked at back in the June meeting when the request for this went in, and now we've been successful in getting that. Okay.
Exactly right.
Next item, I'm going to have to do this so I don't miss one. Adopt Resolution Number 16-115, accepting the Coon Rapids Cardinal Little League donation of batting cages at Riverview Park and authorize the required signatures for the associated agreement. They've got to do some work down there in Cardinal Little League, so they've got to move the batting cages. The next item on our agenda is to adopt Resolution 16-111, miscellaneous assessment, declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessment role, and ordering the public hearing for November 1st, 2016. And for the proposed assessment role, and this is, these are the assessments, include services provided to taxpayers, in most cases code enforcement violations, the terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed, and the proposed assessments are categorized by the number of years to be assessed and the interest rate recommended. And, skip to seven, it's a good thing I'm scratching them off as I go, there we go. The next thing is to amend the budget by authorizing Resolution 16-114, amending the 2016 facility construction fund budget for the purchase of a proxy card system. And this is actually a system for the police department. It's an amount of $37,000. This was anticipated for the proposed 2017 budget, but due to the lack of support for the existing system, which is malfunctioning, it is needed sooner, so the proposed system will be similar to the system used for City Hall, and this will not impact the fund balance of the facility construction fund, but will advance the purchase from 2017 to 2016. Next item is to accept a donation of $500 from the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation, and that was for the Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair held at Riverview Park on September 25th. And I heard they had a very high-ranking grand marshal in their parade that day, Council Manning. And our last item is to appoint the election judges for 2016 general election and set the special meeting to canvas results. So that will be to authorize the appointment of the attached list of election judges, authorize the city clerk to appoint and assign election judges during the 25 days preceding the election as necessary, and schedule a special meeting to canvas election results for Tuesday, November 15th, 2016 at 6:50 PM. And that should be everything on our consent agenda. Your Honor. Councilmember Johnson.
I would move to approve, adopt, accept, and appoint all of the items.
Sounds like that'll work. So we got a motion by Johnson and a second by Demmer. Any discussion or questions for any of these things? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is approved and all those other things you mentioned. Next, we have, one, two, three, four, five, we have five items that all require a public hearing. And since, my guess is there's probably nobody here to actually address these public hearings, but if there are, we need to offer an opportunity. So we are going to open a public hearing to consider vacation of drainage and utility easement for the Lawrence Estates. A public hearing to consider vacation of storm sewer, water main, and sanitary easement per document number 438053, which must also apply to the Lawrence property, maybe? Nope, this is the school district.
Items 11 through 14 are all related to the Lawrence Estates.
Okay, so, and then items 11 through 14 relate to the Anoka Hennepin School District and all of the property lines and the restructuring that was done there. So the first public hearing, as I mentioned, will be for storm sewer, water main, and sanitary easement, then public hearing to consider vacation of the water main easement, and a public hearing to consider vacation of utility water well and access easement, and a public hearing to consider vacation of the storm sewer easement. So this is regarding the Lawrence Estates and the Anoka Hennepin School District property. So I will open the public hearing. If anybody is here to address the council in the public hearing on any of those items, anybody here to address council in the public hearing on those items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll look to council first. We're looking at item 10.
So Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-106, vacating a drainage and utility easements for Lawrence Estates.
Motion by Geisler, second by Manning. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And then we're on item 11, the vacation of the storm sewer, water main, and sanitary sewer easement.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Manning.
I move adoption of Resolution Number 16-107, vacating a storm sewer, water main, and sanitary sewer easement for recorded document number 438053.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Clint. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Was that the item we needed to add, the extra paper?
The very last one.
So 14. Okay, we'll remind you. Excellent.
If I can clarify, it's related to 18. We're adding an additional easement to.
Oh, and now to new business.
Item 18.
Okay, thank you.
It's not a vacation, it's an acceptance.
Got it. All right, so then that brings us to item 12, to consider vacation of the water main easement.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Clint.
I move adoption of Resolution Number 16-108, vacating the water main easement per recorded document number 904370.
Second.
Motion by Clint, second by Geisler. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And now we're looking at the vacation of utility water well and access easement, item 13.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Manning.
My computer's going a little slow here. I move adoption of Resolution Number 16-109, vacating utility water well and access easement for recorded document number 438056.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Clint. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And then item 14, vacation of a storm sewer easement.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-110, vacating a storm sewer easement per recorded document number 438054.
Second.
Motion, motion by Geisler, second by Clint. All in, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, we don't have anything under bid openings and contract awards or old business, but we do have some new business this evening. And the first one is for Planning Case 16-24, to adopt Resolution 16-105, approving a lot split for 10000 Cottonwood Street. And the applicant is proposing to divide a 24,139 square foot parcel into two lots. There is an existing house, attached garage, and small shed on the property. The house fronts Cottonwood Street and also has frontage on 100th Avenue and Dogwood Street. The lot has 90 feet of frontage on Cottonwood, 90 feet of frontage on Dogwood, and 268 feet on 100th Avenue. Both lots comply with the minimum lot width requirement of 80 feet and the minimum lot size of 10,800 square feet. However, both lots require a variance to the minimum lot depth requirement of 135 feet. So parcel A, at 12,018 square feet, has 90 feet of frontage on Dogwood and is 133.5 feet deep. And parcel B, at 12,121 square feet in size, has 90 feet of frontage on Cottonwood and is 134.5 feet deep. So we are looking at, so we don't have any public hearings or anything involved here. So we are just looking at approving the lot split, including the variance.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Manning.
I move approval of Resolution 16-105, approving the proposed lot split, including variance to the lot depth requirements, with the following conditions. One, the appropriate drainage and utility easements be approved by the city engineer and recorded at the county. Two, park dedication and the number $4,000, $2,000 per lot be paid prior to releasing the lot split for recording. And three, compliance with Title 11 Land Development Regulations.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
I just had a couple of questions. So it looks, just from the map, that the size of those two lots would be really comparable to the size of the two straight across the street. So that 9965 and 9962 look like they'd also have that same width variance. Is that?
I mean, I'm not sure. The ones that are straight south, right across 100th Avenue, or, excuse me, maybe it's lane. But they're awfully similar in size to all of the surrounding ones.
Yeah, yeah, so I just, I'm assuming that's the case. And my real, the bigger question is, this, what looks to be, yeah, so those down there, they're, they're the same size.
They'll be the same size.
What the two lots would be roughly.
Yeah.
There's a couple other lots here that I could imagine they might, someone might want to split in the future that wouldn't necessarily need a variance. But the, the one question was, it looks like there's a structure here, right by where the line would go. Did they?
That was a shed that they moved.
They have moved it since.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was what they said at the planning commission, anyway.
Okay, sorry, I missed that one. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a missing request for a variance or anything like that. Okay, I'm, I'm good then.
Well, you're all queued up, though.
Sorry.
Anything else for Scott while he's out there?
It's all right.
Just hang out, right?
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 16, oops, this baby all blown up now. Consider introduction of an ordinance changing zoning of office, general commercial, and moderate-density residential to high-density residential. Mr. Harlecker, do you have a presentation on this one you'd like to go through?
I certainly can.
That'd be awesome.
Mayor and council members, this is a request to introduce an ordinance approving a rezoning of this parcel highlighted here in black to high-density residential. The property on back here, fronting 115, is zoned moderate-density residential. Bulk of the site, which is a Pedersen Floral Property, is currently zoned general commercial. And the single-family residence to the west is zoned office. In total, it's about 2.3 acres for all four parcels. Surrounding, land uses and zoning, it's general commercial, this is the U-Haul facility here, townhouse development here, single-family residences, and a single-family home that is currently home to vacuum cleaner repair business. Across the street, over here, on the other side of Coon Rapids Boulevard, there are single-family residences. Kind of a brief overview, this, these parcels here do have some history to them, dating back to 2009, when the city updated the comprehensive land use plan. These parcels were guided for high-density residential. Staff brought the corresponding zone change to council to make that high-density residential at the request of the property owner. That zone change was denied. And then back in 2011, we brought forward a comprehensive land use plan that would change the land use designation from high-density residential back to general commercial, so it'd be consistent with the zoning. And that's where the property sits today. In 2013, there was an application to change the zoning of these same parcels, and it also included the vacuum cleaner property to high-density residential. Planning commission recommended approval, however, the applicant withdrew their request prior to the application being considered by council. Then in 2015, the same applicant, again, proposed a zone change to high-density residential. Planning commission recommended approval of the proposed change, however, the applicant withdrew their request following the introduction of the ordinance by council. And looking at the proposed zone change, I looked at the intent of the high-density residential district, which is to provide housing at high densities, convenient to shopping, public transit, and recreation, areas that are located to adjacent collector and arterial streets. And this proposed site here does meet all the criteria of the intent of the high-density residential district. It's located on Coon Rapids Boulevard, which is an arterial street with access to transit going up and down Coon Rapids Boulevard, and is adjacent to shopping along the Boulevard. Access, at this time, there is break in the median to allow access, right in, right out, and left in and left out, full access from Coon Rapids Boulevard. As part of the Coon Rapids Boulevard corridor plan that county conducted several years ago, the long-term intent is to close off that median break. So access to this site from Coon Rapids Boulevard will be right in, right out only, which would work for high-density residential, but is, is not conducive to commercial development. We also looked at the lot size, the size and configuration of the parcel limits, what sort of commercial development can go on that site. You're looking at setback requirements are greater, and just the depth and configuration does not lend itself to a commercial structure and the associated parking that's needed to support it. Looked at the compatibility with the adjacent residential land uses, and a high-density residential development provides a better buffer to Coon Rapids Boulevard and is more compatible than general commercial uses. Compatibility with Coon Rapids Boulevard Framework Plan. The Framework Plan identifies certain development principles. Among them is moderate to high-density residential development in the areas between the ports. And because of the corridor's transit access, the Framework Plan includes a policy that calls for moderate and high-density residential district between the ports. And the proposed zone change is consistent with those policies and goals. And we looked at the alignment with the comprehensive plan. The housing chapter identifies a variety of housing goals for the city. It includes allowing for a variety of housing types and designs to provide people with housing choices. And again, high-density residential development at that site would allow for new apartment development in the city, which would only increase residents' housing opportunities and choices.
Mr. Harlecker? So this is part of the River Rapids overlay district?
Correct.
Where it's at?
Yep.
In high-density residential, within that, how many units per acre does that allow?
At this point, it would allow seven units per acre.
So, so if this was approved, we would be approving something, I mean, clearly, tonight is just an introduction.
Correct.
So no matter what, tonight, we're not voting on this, it's just an introduction. But this ordinance change, if approved, would only allow 21 units there, according to our current overlay?
Correct.
Okay, I was just curious. And because in their letter, they're talking about wanting, wanting this change because they're proposing a 98-unit multi-family housing, building five stories tall with the rear wing facing adjacent single-family at four stories.
Right.
Okay.
Mayor and council members, in order to go above that seven units per acre, it would require council approval for density flexibility.
Okay. So this zoning, this zoning change, if we accepted it, wouldn't be some sort of another approval that would allow that? We would only be allowing the seven units per acre, and that would be a separate action later to approve the actual structure and what they want to build?
Site plan, I think that's correct.
All right. Councilmember Geisler, do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Harlecker, refresh my memory. From a site plan, anything, you know, like a single-family home, so site plans don't come through planning or through council. But high-density zoning would always come to council from a site plan perspective, is that correct?
No, and, and, Councilmember Geisler, in this case, the site plan, if they came in at seven units per acre, it would be just planning commission review.
Okay.
But because high-density residential is inherently more units than that per acre, it will require a density flexibility which the council has to approve. So site plan would most likely come back for the council for approval.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember Demmer?
In reading the applicant narrative, it says that there's an attached elevation that, you know, shows the, sort of what they want the building to look like, and they talk about what it was. But I couldn't find that. And I know this is just the introduction, but would it be possible to get that attachment sent around or posted for next meeting?
Yeah, I could put that as an attachment.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other questions of Mr. Harlecker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Have, has staff received any feedback from some of the neighbors in the area, especially along the residential road to the north of that? Part of my concern is that if there's only a right-in, right-out access on Coon Rapids Boulevard, I'm assuming that there'll be a lot of traffic channeled back out onto that residential street.
Yes, Councilmember Johnson and Mayor. Two residents came to the public hearing at the planning commission meeting. Both were residents back on 115th. One was concerned about access out onto 115th. That would be something that will be considered at the time of site plan review. The other resident was concerned about the density, and we explained the process, so they allowed seven units per acre, and if they wanted to go more than that, it was density flexibility would be required. So those are the two comments that we had.
Thank you.
Councilmember Manning?
What is moderate density again? How many units per acre on moderate?
Moderate density is four to seven, four to seven units per acre.
So, but in reality, they're looking at putting a small apartment building there, rather than townhomes.
Correct.
Be a really small apartment building.
98 units is what they're proposing.
Oh, I got one, that says 20.
Well, 21 is what, what's allowed if we accept this, but what they're actually wanting to build there, they're proposing, is 98 units in their narrative.
Well, just to give my opinion here, I know it's only in an ordinance, but we're working on trying to get the Riverwalk developed. We don't need, in my opinion, we don't need something like this complicating things. I'd like to get Riverwalk developed before we move on to putting, or even thinking about putting other apartments in. We've got an awful lot of apartments going in Coon Rapids Boulevard right now. They're upper-scale apartments, market rate, which is nice, but this makes me nervous, and just want to state that for the record, so we can, we can definitely introduce it, but I'm going to look at it too favorably.
Councilmember Clint, is there something?
I'm just, I'm just wondering about the process, do we, because I don't, always seems to be changing. Do we have to make a motion and accept that, or no?
No, I'm just, I'm just, we're just getting any of the questions out of the way that from Mr. Harlecker, so that if, if you need, if you have things that you want to know about currently, and then we're just going to do the introduction, and then we'll be looking at this at the next meeting. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, just to caution the public, and we explained this, I think, at the planning commission stage, too, that neither the council nor the planning commission is considering any particular development tonight. One of the reasons for that is, if the property is rezoned, it could get sold, and then there'd be a whole new developer that would come in. So I wanted to make sure that the public understands that you're not looking at any particular development tonight.
All we're looking at is if we, if we introduce this, and if it passes, it allows up to seven units per acre, correct? That's, that's what I'm doing.
To me, you know, it's not going to be single-family homes ever, you know, and what's the right thing for it. My concern with high density is when our overlay is at seven, a moderate density is a four to seven, so that is kind of in alignment. And the difference becomes permitted uses once you go to high density. There's more permitted uses that I'm not sure are the right things for this property. And if we change it, if this proposal doesn't come to fruition, we could get something that we really don't want. And, and so to me, I would be much more comfortable at a moderate density, because, I mean, if they want to put forth a proposal, and they're going to have to ask for a variance anyway, I would be much more comfortable with a cop plan or zoning change to bring these all into alignment with something that we would like to see. alignment with something that we would like to see there and not have zoning or comp plan designations that would allow certain uses that in the future, if this wouldn't happen, we wouldn't want.
Are we giving comments to let the developer realize where we might be going, or is this just strictly an introduction?
I think this is strictly an introduction and questions for clarification. I don't know if there's the appropriate comments yet, I'm not sure.
Can I ask a clarifying question then?
Well, of course.
So I wasn't, there was a lot of history in that where we had said that at some point we wanted this to be high density. That was what's in the comprehensive plan. Well, according to this, that was what.
What did the plan?
Yeah, so I guess what I was curious about is why that was picked as the long-term land use and, because now I'm, you know, it sounds like that's not the consensus that I'm, that I'm hearing. So is this, so we have to do a new comp plan soon anyway, but if someone could just give me the rationale for why it was picked for that back in, trying to find the spot where it said, 2009?
I could probably give you a little background from that perspective. So when the last comp plan, when the planning commission looked at this area, that would have been then brought to council for recommendation, the proximity to the general commercial, that the higher-density housing made more sense next to a higher business industrial type of use with all the trucks coming and going from the U-Haul. But I, at the same point in time, it was infill and there was more moderate density. And I don't remember if everything was done high-density in this whole thing, because we still had office. And then Coon Rapids Boulevard, the conversation came up about blocking those turns. So that was where anything commercial came out of the plan. And so it always was guided or thought about from a residential perspective. And I think it moderate or high were the two things that just kind of went back and forth. And it went high and then it reverted very quickly back off of high.
I think, Mr. Harlecker, you had some points, or you were kind of reading from two about this being a buffer between the Boulevard and the residence and things like that. That was all part of the comp plan, wasn't it?
Correct. You were looking at mayor and council members. By doing this to high-density residential back in 2009, you know, from a staff perspective, we were looking at the same issues that we're, that's being presented and considered tonight. The compatibility and the buffering between the general commercial, the U-Haul business, and the adjacent moderate density and single-family, providing a buffer along Coon Rapids Boulevard to those same uses. And at the time, also the need for, you know, high-density residential development along the Boulevard to bring people to the Boulevard and to the businesses along the Boulevard. And we thought that this would be a good opportunity for that. And the comp plan was changed. What happened was the property owner still felt that the greenhouse could be a profitable business, and he wanted the property to stay in general commercial. And so that's what we accommodated the property owner.
So any other questions? Otherwise, in the, we're going to introduce this in Planning Case 16-15, the city council will introduce the attached ordinance approving the proposed zone change based on the following findings. Do I still read all the findings if it's just an introduction? Want me to read those?
You can just simply say that the ordinance has been introduced.
All right, excellent. I like that. So we are going to introduce the, sorry, we'll consider this introduced then.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I think probably the question that most people find is, it comes back in which date for actual approval? Is it two weeks or a month? I can't remember.
Your honor, and councilmember Geisler, we don't have a date set on this. I don't think code provides for any particular date that it has to be by or waiting for.
Okay.
So we'll certainly be notifying that. The other thing I should mention is that the comp plan amendment will come at that time as well. That would be a resolution to change the comp plan.
Okay. And my clarification is, I've only heard from one person, and this is in my ward, and I've only heard one, from one person regarding this, which was very surprising to me from being on the planning commission several times ago when we've heard this, and there were many, many, many people who felt very strongly about this property, so.
Can I just ask who was notified of it?
Pardon?
Who was notified?
Everybody within 350 feet.
And mayor and councilmembers, I can maybe speak a little bit to that because I was at that public hearing. There were some concerns raised by the residents, but I think the general thought was they wanted to see the property developed and they preferred to have it instead of standing kind of the way it is, that it would be better. The other thing I heard from the commission was that they promised that when and if a site plan does come before them, they will look very carefully at that site plan regarding the impacts on those properties to the north, particularly in terms of access and, you know, traffic.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the one, the biggest concern I would have is what kind of control we have if we do change this to high-density, what kind of breaks we can put on, or what kind of control we can have on the development of that property. And at this point here, I don't know what that would be.
Can I go back to the 350 feet of notification? How far to the north did that go? Past 115th Lane?
I can look.
Probably only about four homes or something.
That's why I'm saying, that's what I'm wondering, because you say only two people showed up, but if not everyone was notified, that's your reason why there was only two?
Did this get a sign?
Were you from there?
Did we put a sign on this property?
Yeah, it did. We all, I mean, projects.
Where was the sign then as well?
Yeah, I don't know.
Might be on Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Councilmember Wells?
Residents might not see it.
You know, people don't show up for lots of reasons, but I can assure you, knowing several people in the immediate neighborhood, that, you know, there are real concerns about this. And I think part of it, because it was so recently, you know, just last year, I think maybe some of them thought the issue was resolved. I was in that neighborhood for night to night in 15, and believe me, the whole neighborhood had thought this was, you know, put to rest. So I'm sure that maybe some of them don't know about it. And as long as we're still talking about it, I can say unequivocally, I will not support this zone change. I don't think it's appropriate.
All right, so that's, all right, so that's been, we already had this down against. And then the next thing, it's a related introduction of an ordinance changing zoning of office, general, commercial, and moderate-density residential to high-density residential. What if I just do, I just read the same thing?
Say it one again. We're not going to do it again.
No, let's not do it again. Still introduced. Still introduced. Yeah, well, you know, when you press the button on the iPad and it goes back to the top again, and you don't realize it's the same page. All right, here we go. Go to the next one. Consider adoption of Resolution 16-113, providing for the sale of $10 million of general obligation bonds, Series 2016A. Does like anything you want to hit the highlights of or?
Basically, what we're doing is financing some of the street projects, the larger MSA projects that we did this year, so they'd be MSA bonds. And then there was also some water main reconstruction included in those projects. So we'd be paying for the water portion, and then just a small portion for the park referendum. We've issued one bond for the park referendum before. Then we'll do this one, and all we're doing is taking advantage of really low interest rates, up to $10 million. So that's why we're doing this small park bond. So we'll still need to do one more, but we'll stick to the 17.4 that we had authorized in the referendum, so.
Your honor, councilmember Johnson?
I would move the authorization of Resolution 16-113, providing for the sale of $10 million of general obligation bonds, Series 2016A.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
Just a couple of general questions whenever we do bonds. Do you anticipate any effect on our credit rating?
We're trying to schedule a rating call with Moody's, but I would assume that our rating will stay pretty much the same. So it's a high rating. To do anything much more would kind of require a different makeup of the talent. So I'm not anticipating we'll go up, and I'm sure hoping we don't go down.
And then are there any bonds that are coming off this year that this sort of offsets, or is it an additional debt?
Well, we're always paying off bonds.
But I mean, that come off the table, or you need, our overall debt is now higher. There's nothing, nothing balanced out.
It's, it'll be higher. Yep, this will make it higher. We do plan on calling one smaller issue come February 1st, but that's not really that significant, so. But we're totally well within any debt limits.
And this was anticipated with this whole MSA project?
Right.
Was this was the plan, was to bond for him and then use the money from the state's MSA for the next 10 years to pay him back, right?
Right. And then we did get that advance too this year, that $4 million advance from MSA, so that reduced the amount that we actually had to bond. We thought we were going to have to do more, so.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to point out that the interest rate is fantastic. I mean, you're not going to, good timing.
This is still proposed. We didn't sell them yet, but indeed, we're, it's really a great interest rate.
And that, you know, that was a big reason we were doing this, is because the cost of construction is going up faster than the interest is. So if we were to wait two years and do it, we'd actually pay more money than if we financed it. So just, so people understand, this is one of those weird situations where you save money by financing, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And the last item on our agenda is to accept easements and deeds from Anoka Hennepin School District 11, and we now have three quitclaim deeds instead of two. Is that what we've got then? No?
We now have seven easements and two quitclaim deeds.
Oh, okay, so that, I knew we added one thing, at least didn't know which. Okay, so we're going to be looking at a different motion approving seven attached easements, seven easements and two quitclaim deeds. Is there any, this is all part of the, that's Anoka Hennepin School District 11 property. Mr. Hammer, you want to hit the highlights of this, or you want me to pick and choose from these paragraphs?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is roughly a 79-acre platte. It's bounded on the east by University, on the south by Northdale, and on the west by Dogwood and 115th. There's currently two school buildings on the property, three wellhouses. It's currently under construction, a maintenance facility for the school district. So what this does in the end is puts back all of the easements that were just vacated previously tonight and clarifies who owns what out there. Because right now, we're in places we shouldn't be and they're in places they shouldn't be. This has been going on at least since I've been here, and from my understanding, like 20-plus years going back. So in the end, the city will own three wellhouses, one small lot for title issues, and a very large stormwater pond as part of the university project. The school district owns two parcels that schools are on, the new maintenance facility, and a future lot for development up along 115th. With that said, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
I heard the designs on that maintenance garage were really nice, and apparently they had a really good architect working on that. All right, so council?
Your honor.
Councilmember Manning?
I move approval of the seven attached easement agreements and the two quitclaim deeds for portions of property located within the Anoka Hennepin First Edition Platte.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Demmer. Question, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to open mic and public comment. Is anybody here to address council this evening on, during open mic? Yes, ma'am, all right. So open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes, so if you would just provide your name and your address. If there's any questions from council, they'll be for clarification only, and if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forward to the speaker. So thank you. If you just give your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Pillman. I live at 3554 115th Lane Northwest. I was going to discuss an item that is on the agenda, so I won't, but I will take this opportunity to share with you. I brought my son's Cub Scout den, and this is their first meeting of the city council, and it's been fantastic. So thanks for the great discussion.
Welcome, 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 please.
Your honor, you three understand that you have to submit a report back to us by your time?
Don't listen to him. Don't indulge him.
Anybody else who can address city council under open mic this evening? All right, hearing none. We'll close that portion. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. Councilmember Clint?
We had an open house last night about the property for the transit development, but some questions came up, and I, I don't know if there's anything we can do about this, but coming out of both 121st and 123rd onto Northdale, the sightlines are really bad. One's because of just trees and brush and stuff, and the other one's because of a fence. And I don't know if the safety commission looks at those kinds of things and does any kind of recommendations, especially with a fence. I don't know. But can we look into that, please?
Mayor and councilmember Clint, I did speak with our assistant city engineer about those. I heard those same comments, and I believe he was going to add it to the traffic review committee's sort of agenda, so I think we'll look at those soon.
Thanks.
Did you include pedestrian crossing? Because that was one of the, that was a couple of the concerns that I heard last night, was how difficult it is to get from that neighborhood over to Target, because you either have to go all the way down to the stoplight, or, and they're just wondering if there's, if we would look at that. Councilmember Demmer?
I just wanted to say that was the Hope for Youth 4K that was at Bunker Hills, and what a great job the golf course did at hosting a nighttime run with the little luminary candle bags all along the course. It really was really cool, fun thing to bring kids to, you know, but also kind of a somber event. I think it would be an excellent choice to do a Halloween run there in the future. I know Anoka's kind of got the Halloween thing, but that was really a neat, a neat idea to have the luminaries along the path, so. Good job on putting that together and raising some money.
They said they had 700 pre-registered and about 100 walk-ins. I've never seen that many cars at that place. It was unbelievable. Mr. Anderson, any long-term damage, or are we all good?
It was, mayor, council, it was spectacular. I was fortunate to be part of it, as we all were at the facility, and we're very hopeful it comes back as an annual event, that's for sure.
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
Mr. Piper?
Mayor, councilmembers, next week is Fire Prevention Week. It's a very busy week for the party car, and we start out by getting into all the elementary schools, and talk to all the K through 5 students about fire safety, various fire safety messages. And then the week ends with an open house at all three fire stations on Saturday, the 15th, from 10 to 12. And on the city's website, you can look there, and it talks about the different events. I'll be very brief. Fire Station 1 on Egrith and Coon Rapids Boulevard, they're going to have a kitchen fire training scenario where it's a high-tech interactive demo, where you can practice stuff there. There'll also be the rollover simulator, which we always remind people to wear your seat belts, because bad things happen if you don't. And Station 2 on 121st between Hanson and Foley by the railroad tracks, Conexus Energy will be doing a safety demo there at both 9:30 and 10:30, and there'll be a live kitchen fire demonstration there, and there'll also be a DJ. fire demonstration there, and there'll also be a DJ. And last, up at Fire Station 3 on 113th and Crooked Lake, there'll be a, a bouncer for the kids to jump around in, there'll be a medical helicopter landing there, and then at all the stations, there'll be station tours, and I don't want to leave this out, we will have cookies, coffee, juice, and balloons, so everybody's welcome. Again, October 15th, all three fire stations, Saturday from 10 to 12. Thank you.
It's such a great event, it really is, for the families.
Hope the weather, the weather holds, right?
If the weather holds, yeah.
Councilmember?
Yeah, a couple of things, both dog-related. The, love my pet fair for next year. If you haven't been there, I, I think they're gonna have it every year now, as I've heard of you, and it was just a wonderful, fun event. If you love dogs, you need to go to that. They had every kind of dog, from Chihuahuas to Great Danes there, and they dressed the animals up and have a little contest on which animal had the best costume, and it was just fun. You just, I don't know how many dogs there must have been, about 50 different dogs there, all different breeds. And then, the other one was the, the contest, the judging of the police dogs. Now, this was in Anoka, at Goodrich Field, but we went there, and that was fascinating. That really was fascinating. And Coon Rapids, the Melinois, the Belgian Melinois from Coon Rapids fared pretty well, and it did a good job, and so it was really fun to see, and I would suggest that if anybody is interested in something like that, take a look next year and go out and have fun looking at that.
To, to expand on that, Councilmember Manning, it, it was a great event, and they had, they had canines from all over the state there, from St. Louis County, Rendell County, from everywhere, and, and I would say that was just a little bit understated that the Coon Rapids dogs did well, since Interna and Ike actually won the whole day, they won the whole competition. It was so much fun to watch those guys. There was the decoy down there that tries to bait the dogs to attack them, and then they have to call them off. Brian Sternquist and Taz, he called off Taz, pow, instantly turned around and came back. Three dogs in a row went down and attacked the guy, knocked him down, which at first, when we didn't understand how it was supposed to work, we went, all right, then we went, oh, no, they're not supposed to do that.
Wrong guy.
Wrong guy. So, Taz came right back, but then when Ike got out there, Interna, just whatever the command was, Ike just turned right around, and they took off, and we went, oh, this is gonna be the winning time, and they just smoked through, and, yeah, they won the whole championship, so...
Yeah, I didn't know that. I, we, we left before we got the results, but from watching, they looked like they did well.
It was very impressive. It's very fun, and, and hopefully, it's an annual event, and if you get a chance, it really is something to watch those dogs working, 'cause they have fun, apparently, when they do that. All right, any other business to come before council? Mr. Hammer, did we get everything cleaned up down at Evergreen, all those washed-out streets and washed-out new curbs, and is that just about put back together again?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the road was put back together. I believe they were trying to anticipate getting the curb in last week and trying to get it paved, and I'm hoping it got paved today before it's gonna start raining again.
Thank you, all right. Any other business to come before council?
You're watching the adjournment? A motion by Geisler, second by Clint, and the mayor by saying aye. Aye. And we are adjourned.